Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Could we stand for a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rick Mullen? Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve on the Airport Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my good friends. I'm Rick Mullen. I'd love to serve on the Airport Board.
Is that on?
It's one of the...
Just a minute, Rick.
Good. Can you s...
There you go.
Are we good now?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello again.
Hi, I'm Rick Mullen. I applied to serve on the Sioux City Airport Advisory Board. My wife and I travel a lot, and we always prefer flying out of Sioux City. It means a lot to me to have a good airport here with good service. And I have served on a couple of other boards many years, and as the president of the Convention Center Audito- Tourism Board, and then later as the president of the Museum Board of Trustees. I found those to be interesting, and you learn an awful lot doing these things, too. And you get to work with some really great folks. So I would like the honor of serving on the board, if you'd be willing to name me on the board.
Thank you. You're a good man, Rick.
Why, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a question. You do fly all over.
I do.
Yeah.
Will you follow me on Facebook, yes?
Yeah, you bet. You've been more places than I thought of going, so...
And we always try to fly out of Sioux City whenever we possibly can.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I appreciate your application, for sure. I know you've served the community in a lot of different capacities, so I'm thankful and appreciate you applying. I would say, in your travels, I think anyone that serves on that board, one of the biggest things that I always think about is, what could we be doing better? Obviously, everyone wants more routes, more things west, more south, as you indicated on your application. I think those are things that we all know. I think it's also little things at our airport, you know, what could we be doing better to serve our customers and make sure that people are utilizing the airport a lot, just as much as you are, so...
Yeah, it's much more convenient than leaving out of town, and often the rates are better when you fly to Sioux City. It is.
Put you on a commercial. There you go.
I too want to thank you for making the application, Rick.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
And a totally separate subject, one second here. On behalf of the Sioux City Film Festival Board, I want to thank you very much for the support the City Council's given us for two years in a row. It meant an awful lot to us. Our festivals continue to grow, partially with the direct support of the city, and we will be announcing our fall festival in downtown Sioux City in October, and we'll be announcing shortly. But again, on behalf of our board, I wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice.
Go ahead.
Okay, we're going to take care of the Ikey Nickel issue right now. One second. With that said, first of all, I want to thank everybody out there for showing us this good backing for the people that you believe in, because that's what it's all about. I'm on Ikey Nickel's side. I know that they deserve to have that campground. And we all know that for years, it's been a campground. We all realize that. But then we have one person, maybe one organization, that decides to make an issue, and... Oh, they can hear me. Whoa. Anyway, I believe that we need to do the right thing. And with that said, before we have anybody talk, I'm going to have Jeff Hanson come up here and explain to you all what's going on. Everything's going to be fine. We're working it all out. We've talked to Mike. Mike's talked to Jeff and talked to the city manager. And with that said, I'm going to have Jeff explain everything to you.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager with the City of Sioux City. To provide some background, on June 10th, Monday, city staff and zoning staff and the manager's office had received several complaints from an individual in regards to camping operations occurring at the Ikey Nickel, which is owned by Mick Verzani. On June 10th, we sent an inspector to the property, and they determined that there was camping operations occurring from the weekend prior. And it also appeared that camping was to continue the next week for another event. Following that inspection on Monday, June 10th, we completed our own research to determine that campground located in that zoning district was not allowed. The current property is zoned Business Park, which is an industrial zoning district, and unfortunately does not allow for a camping facility. Therefore, on June 11th, a letter was hand-delivered to the property owner at the Ikey Nickel to advise them that camping was not allowed, and our inspector asked for the owner to cease all camping operations within a five-day period. That five-day period allowed for that next weekend event to occur. The campers were already on-site. There was already activities planned, and it was only fair that we allowed them to continue their next weekend event. So we allowed them five days to continue the camping, which would have put them to June 16th. I want to be clear that at that time, when this letter was provided, there was no monetary citations issued. There was no fines. There were no fees applied to any of this. It was just a zoning violation notice at this time. On June 17th, as stated in the letter, a re-inspection occurred on the property, and Mick Verzani, the owner, and the employees of the property, all the camping had ceased. All the campers were gone. They were all pulled up either out of the campground, and there was a few left in the parking lot, and Mick was taking care of that issue. Last week, we met with Mick to discuss the options. As I stated, camping, unfortunately, although it's occurred in the past, we've never received any complaints. There's never been enforcement taken, whether that be the previous owner or the current owner. And unfortunately, with that complaint, we had to take action, based on a complaint that was received at our office. And at that time, we determined, indeed, it was not allowed. So in speaking with Mick, we've threw out some options to him. As a property owner, a rezoning request could be applied for. Right now, camping is allowed in the GC, which is a general commercial zoning district, PI, which is Public Institutional, and EG, which is our agricultural district. Three zoning districts allow it. Unfortunately, this property is within the BP or Light Industrial Zoning District. So working with Mick, we've determined that we're going to go down the path of a rezoning request. In addition to that rezoning request, we're going to look at adding the necessary facilities, if Mick chooses to, to make this a more formal campground, which would require some facilities, such as a dump station, possibly outdoor restrooms. I know there's already been discussions and estimates with Mid-American on providing electrical services to the camper sites, as well as a paved lane to get into the campground. As you know, the campground during its normal season or normal daily operations is a driving range, and it's used as a campground during this event, or during these events being held at the property. So at this time, I feel confident at the staff level that we'll continue to work with Mick Verzani in regards to a resolution, whether that be a rezoning or it's a temporary use permit, which could be done with a text amendment within our zoning ordinance. But I'm confident that we can come to a resolution.
Thank you, Jeff. So with that said, I think everyone can see that it's being taken care of. We're doing, we're making all the right steps to make sure that everybody gets what they want. No reason to be upset, except maybe it shouldn't have ever happened in the first place, is the way I look at it, but then, can't change that. So if anybody wants to make a remark, make it short and sweet, because it's a done deal. We're taking care of it, so...
My name is Dan Robeski. I live at 1324 Irene Street in Sioux City, and he just saved me a whole lot of reading. I'm an old guy, and I have to write my stuff down, or I forget. The point of the whole thing is, is that back in 2015, when the Ikey Nickel was sold to Mick Verzani by Jim and Jan Foster, they had a professional real estate Realtor handling the sale. I have a copy of the document for the sale, and it states on there that light manufacturing zoning allows for camping to take place on the premises. Now, what he said the zoning was is totally different.
We've had a zoning change since then.
Pardon?
I would guess it's because we've had a zoning text change since then. We had a new conference...
I talked with a guy named Ron in the zoning office the other day, and he said there hasn't been a change to the zoning since 1976.
Well, we had a new map just recently, but I don't know if that's...
Rick, the property was zoned ML, Light Manufacturing, in 1976 zoning and sign code. Most recently, with the new zoning ordinance adopted in 2015, that zoning district was transitioned to BP, which is Business Park, but also under the '76 and 2015 code, camping was not allowed in either zoning district. Although it was written in a Realtor transaction, there was no confirmation from any zoning staff that camping was allowed.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hanson. I was going through the municipal code this morning. There's something I didn't find until later. Was but Table 25.02.040 concerning zoning districts has a zoning district called GC, which is General Commercial. The description that is on that table is "A broad range of smaller and larger-scale commercial use types situated on parcels that have onsite parking." That describes the Ikey Nickel to a T.
But it doesn't matter what it describes. It's not zoned that way on the map. That's why he said one of the options would be for them to rezone to GC. You're exactly right. GC...
That's what we're asking for. We're asking that...
Well, we can't initiate that. The owner is the only one that can initiate that. Mr. Verzani will have to make a petition. He knows that from talking to Jeff. The City Council can't do that.
What we would, what we would ask for is at least a stay of execution on this whole thing. Like he said, I've talked to Mick. Mick is, you know, he's willing to do what it takes. The Ikey Nickel has never been advertised as a campground. It was a driving range, and Mick just lets people put their stuff out there for the events that he has, which are 90% for charity. By stopping Mick from doing this, we're taking money away from these charities.
Well, let's be clear. We're not stopping Mick from doing anything. We're just trying to get it so he can do everything.
Yeah.
So, you know...
Well, we would ask for a stay of execution on it, just so Mick can...
The problem is, we can't do that, because it's in the zoning ordinance, and now he's filed a complaint. As long as, we would have never gone out there if there would have not been a complaint filed. Once a complaint's filed, we've got to, we've got to operate under the zoning ordinance.
And I don't want to be disrespectful to you, but that's what Ron told me the other day, that they received a complaint on it, so they had to go out and do something about it. Well, anytime there's a function here in town, RagBri, Awesome Biker Nights, anything like that, you can run all over this town, Walmart, Baumgars, the Tyson Event Center, and nurse people with campers set up out there. None of those people have ever received a citation. None of them people have ever been harassed about this. Only the Nickel gets harassed about this. What we would ask is that, you know, and I suppose it's up to the zoning. If it's not up to the council, I guess it's up to zoning. Just let Mick carry on usual until he can get... You can't snap your fingers and make these changes happen, the stuff that he's willing to put in. We would, we would just like to be able to run the rest of our events, benefit the charities, benefit the visitors that are coming into town.
The way I understand it is, we are going to be working with them, aren't we, Jeff?
We are. My understanding is there's an event that's planned, I believe, late July. In speaking with Mick, until we can have that resolved, as we know, a rezoning request could take anywhere from 35 to 45 days to process that, to ensure that we follow all the necessary public hearings to go through a rezoning request. It's by ordinance, so therefore it'll take three readings by the council, and we'll need time to work with the property owner to make that application and go through the necessary publications and hearings to do that. So I don't, with the timing of that and the timing of the next event, I don't think it's going to fall in line fast enough to meet their needs.
I was going to ask you about the timeframe, Jeff, so that, so what would be the planning and zoning? I know you don't have the schedule probably in front of you, but what's the deadline? The next deadline to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission's schedule? Would that be next Thursday, which is, or this coming Thursday?
Yeah, we would have had a deadline last week for the following meeting, because we have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tomorrow, which is the items and the agenda, as you know, are already been set. And we have our own notification process that we have to go through. So for the next meeting, the application deadline was last week.
It would be the July 9th, and would be the next Planning and Zoning meeting, which is a, I believe that's...
It'd be the one following that, because the application deadline for the 9th was already last week, I believe. Chris? Yeah.
But if, but if they got it in this week, can you, can you not expedite that if it's filed yet this week?
Potentially. The pre-agenda goes out on Friday, so we'd have to get an application turned in fairly quick.
So if that did happen, then it would be July 9th for Planning and Zoning, and then it would go to the City Council...
Approximately two weeks later.
...the 22nd of July. And could we not do, if it's favorable and public input is good, could we not do our three readings on the 22nd of July?
You could, but then I think the notice is done on that following Saturday before it becomes effective.
Okay, with all that said, can we, can we do a grace period and let them have that event, and then get it passed the next week?
Well, let's, let's see, though, if we can't get that application in...
Well, this is the big deal, having to hit these...
It's a huge deal. I understand that. But I'm, see if we can't get that application in by tomorrow, or... Well, probably by tomorrow, because...
That would be, our preference by the latest would be tomorrow.
And again, that's with the business owner. That's not on...
I'm, for a second, just, I am the business owner.
Good afternoon.
And I will get that permit turned in tomorrow. And I have been working with Jeff to try to work this out and straighten it out. We want to do everything properly.
State your name and address.
Michael Verzani. I live at, I own the Ikey Nickel, 4704 First Street. I live on Correctionville Road. We are, I am working with Jeff. He's doing a great job trying to help me get this done. It would be great if we could do our events that we've already planned. We did not know. When I bought the property, I thought it was, and that is my mistake. Everyone said, the previous owners did, the Realtors did, everyone did. So if there was a change or wasn't, that was, it wasn't known to me. And I'm trying to work with the city to do whichever way we can. We're just trying to provide somewhere nice for people to come, to relax and have fun. And it's only on weekend bases. And if we can work out a permit, what, I'd be fine to pay the permit fee or whatever for the city to help out with whatever. Like I said, most of the events, we do our charity-based, and then we want to work with everybody and just help bring more people into town.
Try to get that, try to get that in, and we'll...
And I will get it in tomorrow. I will get down here and talk to Jeff and try to get everything filled out that I need to.
We'll expedite it on our end if you get that.
That would be excellent, and I surely will.
That way, I don't have to listen to my son and my daughter-in-law, okay?
Well, thanks, Bob. I appreciate that. It's been, it's been a rough week, so... But I, but I appreciate it, and I'm glad you guys will work with us. And we will, like I said, we just want to bring more businesses into town and try to help get people from outside to come here to have a good time in Sioux City.
Hey, listen, I'm with you. I'm sure you all kind of figured, you guys all know I had a bar. I totally understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
And you know what? Your events are a big deal, because that's what gets you through the summer.
Yes, it does. And that's what survives my winter.
You bet.
And those big events make the money to keep that place up and going.
It's tough.
And it's a driving range. It's a great summertime venue, but the summer, the winter's rough. And without those big events, it's hard to keep, you know, and I employ a lot of people there in the summertime.
You bet.
There's 40 people working there.
And, and you know, here's the other side of it. You still got to deal with the weather. You got to deal with rain. You know, and if you get rained out for some crazy chance, like we've had lately...
Yes, it's been terrible.
You know, you're going backwards, you know?
Yes.
So we're going to do all we can here to get it through.
All right, well, that, I appreciate it.
You get it in, and then we'll have to look at what we can do on a temporary basis, but let's get it in.
That sounds great. I'll get it in tomorrow. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say one last thing. And you guys can sit. It's just pertaining to the whole ordeal. The last thing that I wanted to say was, your support is impressive. You know, people care about your business, and they care about this community, especially the events that you hold. I think that's obvious. The concern that I have is people on social media. Because I think a lot of times, and I would ask yourself, I know sometimes I'm not always positive, but you know, your supporters sometimes are shedding a really negative light on the city, on city workers, and on the city council. And I hope so. All of you in this audience, all of you have the power to be a positive voice on social media, because you just witnessed the city council saying, "Look, we're going to do absolutely everything we can to make sure that you continue to do this, that we're able to hold these events, that we're supporting this community, that we're supporting this business." That's what the city council cares about. So when I go, I literally went to appointments, and people pulled me aside and said, "I heard the city council is shutting down the Ikey Nickel's camping. Why are they doing this? What are they doing?" We never would have done this if it wasn't for an outside complaint. And now that it was complained, we had to act. We legally had to act. And so now you see city staff, city council, and others that are doing everything they can to make sure this continues to happen. You all have the ability to project that light on our community when so many people are negative. So many people are saying that the city council is the big bad brother that's just shutting everything down, when oftentimes I don't think that's the case. So I appreciate you all being here, and I hope you do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else be heard?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. We're going to go to the regular agenda, which is Items 3 through 15B. That constitutes a consent agenda today. You can consider that all items pass unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, as already has been done, please state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns.
You all can stay. It's going to be fun. Come on.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Number three, it's a reading of the City Council minutes of June 17, 2019. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions. Five is a resolution authorizing a gift for the Rudy and Flora Lee Celebrating Community Project.
Mayor, I'd like to thank Mark Avery, Flora Lee. Run your item. I'd like to thank you both. Would you like to make a few comments about this project and all that it's meant to the community and all your hard work on it? We thank you both.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to say thank you for all the support that you gave this project, each and every one of you council members that voted and supported this project in the very beginning. And it took longer to complete than any of us thought it would. Pardon me?
It wasn't that bad.
No, but, so really do appreciate it. And I, again, I'm humbled and honored that you would allow the project to be named after my husband and myself. And I really think it's an attribute to our community, the artwork, the history. And so often, we look outside of our city and our community for heroes and she-ros, and we have them right here in our community. So thank you, thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Flora.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark? Just a few, because you've done a lot, a lot of work on this, and I'm really proud to see how, what an artist you really are.
No, thank you, Dan. And I really don't have a lot to add to Flora's comments. I would say this, there, I was really a principal in working with the city staff. And there was not a time when we didn't feel 100% supported by Nicole and Mike Collette, Jeff Harkum, Bob Padmore, all the city staff that helped us with our dedications were just absolutely wonderful to work with. And so it was a real joy to do the project. I would reiterate what Flora said. We just so much appreciated the council and Mayor Scott's support in this. I think it's added a really, really beautiful feature to our downtown. So thank you so much.
When we, when we have a local artist that can do these kind of projects, we're, we're all proud, Mark.
And it's, it's just really phenomenal what you've put together. And Flora Lee, thank you for your patience and hard work that you've done on this as well.
You're welcome.
We can only imagine what those statues would have looked like. We'd let the twins do them rather than you, Mark, so thank you. You're good work.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Boy Scout out there, we should recognize. What troop are we here with today?
204.
204, where's that from?
Um, it's on Chianti, it's a little church.
All right. Glad to have you here.
Welcome, no doubt.
Number six is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by updating the job description for water plant operator in training. Seven is a resolution approving the final plat of the Cleric View subdivision the petitioner's wager constructs. Eight is a motion appointing Kenneth Tidwell Jr. to the Civil Service Commission for a four-year term. Nine are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing an airport improvement grant application for the FAA for the Taxiway C-South Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution authorizing parks and recs to apply for a Gilchrist Foundation grant for the Riverfront Development Project. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Martin Building Airways Improvement. Gordon, are you in the audience? What's 10% of $60,000?
10% of $60,000?
Yeah.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer.
Not a trick question. $6,000.
Yeah.
How much is this change order? $16,000.
Yes.
Aren't those supposed to come to the council before you get that far into them?
Yeah, I guess, I guess. You're right.
I really have a difficult time. These guys went in that basement. They engineered the project. They knew what the scope of the work was. And now we get a 25% increase in an engineering, just for inspections now, just for inspections, above and beyond what they originally bid.
Their inspection originally was for part-time, which was requested back in October of 16. When the project started, we bumped it up to full-time, so at that point is when we should have gone forward with the amendment to their contract. And then the contractor did go over by about 10 and a half days. So he'll be charged, what is it, $15,000, $10,500 in liquidated damages.
Never collect those, but that's okay. I appreciate your efforts, but I don't see how you're going to collect that, number one. And number two, I still have a problem that, it won't matter, they're going to vote for it, but here's, here, they're doing such a great job, how come we put, we put the insulation on an... First of all, you take the sidewalk away from the Martin Building, then their emergency exit, you put foam in front of for two days. In case there was a fire there, we have a huge liability. If they're doing their job, they should have made them store that foam off-site. And it just...
And that was a mistake by the, when they added the...
Well, that's not the only mistake. You know, we've had others on this job, but I want to pull this for a vote. But in the future, if you know that's going over, you, an engineer isn't any more professional than a contractor, for me. If it's 10% on their contract, it's 10% on engineering contracts. That's our rules around here. And we should have known that a lot sooner. So I want a separate roll call vote.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Hi.
B is a resolution approving a consulting service agreement with DGR Engineering for the South Fairmont Reconstruction Project. And I think this is a DOT job, so you're stuck, even though you don't interview. C is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Ingleside Reconstruction Project. I noticed on this one, you didn't put a dollar amount of the project. You only put the engineering.
I apologize for that one. Well, no, it's, it's $194,500.
Yeah, that's the engineering. What's the...
There's no inspection on that one.
I want to know what the job, on all the others you put, this is the estimated cost of the job.
Gotcha. Okay.
And so, I mean, is it 20% or 15%? What's the estimate of the job?
I don't have that information, but I can get that to you.
All right. D is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with J E and O Consulting for the Myrtle Street Reconstruction Project. 32.5% for inspection and engineering. That seems reasonable to you?
I expect it to be higher than that for construction.
Are you kidding me? We haven't, hardly ever paid 30%. You normally have 15% for engineering, 15% for inspection on a high job. This one's 32.5%, and we've just started.
32.5? I don't understand the math on that one.
Well, $2.24 million divided into your 792,000 worth of engineering comes out to...
That's, that's just for that one fiscal year. We're actually having, split up between...
The total job says $2.24 million. I just read it. Unless your memo's wrong, that's what it says. Says it qualifies for 80% of $2.24 million. $2,240,000 is what your memo says now. So I'm going off your memo. If that's wrong, then I apologize, but that's where I got my number.
No, that $2.24 is the maximum we're going to get through the swap funds. The city still has contribution to that. The project is estimated to be over $5 million for the whole project.
Well, that's not what you're, that's, okay, okay. It'd be nice in the future if we knew what the job costs are, then if that's the case. Because if you read that memo, it looks like the job's $2,240,000. it looks like the job's 2.24, $2,240,000. Because there's no other number there that I have to go by.
I understand that and I apologize for that.
No, that's, just, let's know what the jobs are so we know. It's public record anyway. It's not like, right? I mean.
Yeah.
The one question that I had, and Gordon is probably not for you, it's just speaking in general, was it was almost, I found myself reading all of these agreements to contracts and looking at inspection services and all the engineering costs and everything that goes into it. And I was like, gosh, if we hired on two more engineers or had more of an engineering firm and just paid them, I don't care, pay them very well. I just thought, gosh, we're still, wouldn't you save? The amount of money that we put in inspections and engineering. Look, on this agenda alone, that I was just thinking to myself that it's like, gosh, I would rather spend $500,000 annually just to have three or however many more engineers. I'm obviously thinking with health and benefits and everything like that, but thinking about that as opposed to, gosh, we'd outsource all of this stuff and just go by whatever they're charging. And then, that's probably to the mayor's point of just how expensive this gets.
But.
Do other communities do that? I don't know. I'm saying I'm ignorant.
Haven't we talked about that? Because it seems like we can't find engineers.
True, but in this situation, I think we're talking, Alex is talking more about inspection at this point.
Just, yeah, more oversight of these projects.
He said engineers, so.
The surveying and the, yeah, and I don't know if that has to be an engineer. I'm just saying that because they're engineering firms. So, maybe it's not an engineer. It's just one of their staff or someone. I don't know. Again, I am fine and comfortable saying I'm ignorant to that. I'm just saying, when I was reading it, I was like, this is so much coin that is going out. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, we're thinking about sewer rates and raising every, you know, that I'm thinking about, well, gosh, where's our money going and where can we save?
That is correct. The design is a little bit different than the inspection, whereas you could hire some inspectors for a certain cost. It's a little bit easier than for the engineering, because with the engineering, it comes with the surveyors, the drafters, the actual engineers. So, that's a little bit different. So, it would be.
And has that ever been done? Are there other communities that?
We used to have more inspectors than we do now.
And we found that that didn't work or we just cut those positions?
We used to have a survey crew.
Combination, I think it was.
And what was your experience, Bob, if you were here during that? I'm literally just throwing out an idea, trying to save money in as many different ways.
Gordon, isn't, is there a standard when you hire a consulting service to do the work? Is it generally in that 10% to 15% range for the, over the total cost of the project?
It's typically anywhere from 7% to 10% for design and another 7% to 10% for inspection and administration.
That's really the money you would have to work with, Alex, I think, in order to hire additional employees. And I don't know if you can get it done for that. And I don't know if that's viable.
What I'm saying is with all the jobs, you stack on all the jobs on top of it. That's 7% to 10% on one job. And you look at how many jobs we're.
We currently have, what's up?
It runs more than 7%.
Yeah, yeah.
Do your last round of jobs and you'll, you'll see it's close.
Yeah.
10 to 15.
And that's, and whatever the percentage is, I'm just saying, we have so many jobs that it's like, if you're running that percentage on any of those and add the people to offset that cost, I can't imagine there wouldn't be cost savings. But I don't know that. And so, I don't know.
We'd have to look at the numbers.
Yep.
And the projects.
Bob, do you have an opinion?
And the complexity of the project.
We'd have to look, we'd have to cost out what adding staff would be. Part of the reason we go with contractors is because of the specialized nature from time to time. And then, in addition, whether there's a job or not, if we have staff, we're paying them. So, we have to weigh those things when we look at how to process that.
And I think those are two great points. I understand that.
We could definitely look into it.
I just think for budgeting in the future, I mean, I don't know if, and you could, you could come back and say, Alex, we crunched the numbers and it was way off. It would not make sense because of the specialty or specialization projects or because we won't always have projects going. If you come back to me with that, that's fine. I'm just reading this and then having a hard time swallowing the amounts that we're talking about when thinking, gosh, if we just had people on staff that we could do that, wouldn't there be savings? But however much you want to look into that, I would appreciate it, but that's what I found myself really thinking.
I'll talk with Bob tomorrow.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mayor.
He is a resolution awarding service provider agreement to Grumman Hicks for the repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Eleven are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving change order number three and authorizing payment to pay KP Construction for the annual storm inlet rehabilitation project. B is a resolution approving a court, well, purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to road machinery and supplies for one Kamatsu crawler dozer. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Jensen Motors for one F-250 pickup. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed Stevers Ford for one F-150 pickup.
I'd like to make an amendment to that, 12C. Or do I have to pull the item? Pull the item and then make the amendment?
Because.
I'd like to pull 12C, make an amendment that we award the purchase order to Jensen Motors of Lamar's.
Second.
On the amendment, Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stu Hansen Dodge for one Dodge Ram 2,500 tradesman pickup.
We can pull that as well.
Do that again.
Name, song, and dance.
Make the amendment?
Yes, and then it voted on with the consent agenda.
We'll amend 12D.
As amended.
Jensen Motors of Lamar's.
Second, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Mayor?
Yes.
I need to abstain on 14A1. Maybe you don't have that yet. Have you gotten to that yet?
Just going to that.
Okay, 14A1 and 14B1 and 14B3.
14 are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list. Come forward if you have questions. 15 are receipt of minutes. See the list. Come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on anything on the consent agenda?
I don't have an agenda. I couldn't find one. And I've been very much, not been able to hear some of what's been said. Was the, um, was the audio and the sound and visual system replaced here?
Because I still can't hear people.
Yeah?
And it's not my hearing. People aren't speaking up.
Hey, just a minute. We need your name and address.
Okay, my name's David Keen, 1106 Fourth Street.
Okay. Well, I don't know why you can't hear because we're talking right into the microphone, but.
Well, you were talking into your palm. I'm not being disrespectful, but that's what the case was. So, anyway, we can't hear you. I can't hear you that well.
Well, then I'll do a better.
Why don't we take?
Okay, I got the message, David.
Was there anybody that couldn't hear some of what was said? I mean, I was here, you're voting on things that we don't know what you're voting.
We got the message. Okay?
Okay. I want to hear, I want to talk about Big Ox.
Then you can wait till the end under the sewer rates or Citizen Concerns, because that's not on the agenda.
Well, I don't have an agenda and I couldn't hear what you said as far as, does somebody want to speak up about something? What was it that you said?
You want to speak on any of the items we just went over?
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, now they have, yes.
Passes 5016 is a hearing in ordinance vacating the alley in the block bounded by 4th, 5th. Virginia Jennings Petitioners Sioux City P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Not much to say on this item. It is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Go ahead with the vacation.
The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 50. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Move second, third.
Second. One second, let me. There you go. You may vote.
Passes 50. Hearing in ordinance vacating the alley at 2607 and 2609 Dace Avenue. Petitioners Bacon Creek Design P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Or second.
Michelle Bosnalis, Chair Planning and Zoning. I guess my comments, if I can do it just on the next three items, that's how they were presented to us. The petitioner owns the whole area and wants to be able to have it be a one lot and be able to build on it, buildable lot. So.
But they're across the street from each other, right?
Um.
Am I reading that right? No, they're all the same, right above tires, tires, lot.
Right.
Part of them is across, the other part is.
Yeah.
But the alley is.
Well, I know what the alley, yeah.
Isn't it between that and Miles? Is that where we're talking?
No.
No.
No, it's a green, it's right by tires, tires, tires. And I know the alley's there. I know it's on one side.
Right.
But your zoning is crossing the street. And I'm confused because in one place it says Dan owns it, then you're there representing him, but then the owner that signed or the petitioner is a photography studio. So, come on up and tell us what's going on. And I mean, not that that matters for the zoning necessarily, but it's, I didn't know that somebody that was a petitioner could do it for somebody that was the owner without their permission.
Doug Rose, Bacon Creek Design, 220 Southwest Cod. Chad Guzman bought the property that's, that we're talking about.
Okay.
Bought it from Schroder, Elizabeth Schroder Trust.
Okay, so it's not, Dan, Dan doesn't own any of this?
No.
Okay.
Chad owns it.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris Madden Planner, just to elaborate, there is three items here. One is the vacation shown here in green on the map. And this would be tires, 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 just to the east and their parking lot to the north. The second and third items are the rezonings. They are across the street from each other. So, the first rezoning is actually on the west side here. They would include the properties in green. And then, the second rezoning is on the side. Incorrect. The petitioner was Bacon Creek Design, but Aurora Photography is the property owner. They did sign the application.
Okay, the hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
So, this is item 17, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Passes 50. Is anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
No. I'll move that.
Second.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Why is this not going? Probably because I wasn't voting. I was, I was thinking about something else, I guess. Passes 50. 18 is a hearing in ordinance rezoning a portion of South Lynn Street and Dace Avenue. Petitioner Bacon Creek Design P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
You've already answered. The hearing's now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Just wanted to cool people down.
Us.
Passes 50. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
I move it. Second.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Move second, third.
Second.
Passes 50. Number 19 is a hearing in ordinance rezoning a portion of South Lynn Street and Dace Avenue. Petitioners Bacon Creek Design P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 50. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it. Second.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Move second, third.
Second.
One moment, please. There you go. Sorry about that.
Fine. Thank you.
You want to shout it?
Rhonda, I think you're holding the button down a little bit. Just push the button. There you go. Thank you.
We'll figure it out sooner or later. Passes 50. 20 is an ordinance, hearing in ordinance rezoning 715 Cunningham Drive. Petitioners Costco Properties P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Michelle Bosnalis, Planning and Zoning Commission. We did make a recommendation for this item. The petitioner wants to go from general commercial to business park for warehouse storage. Plans to use the building for a contractor flex space. There weren't any other comments at the, at the meeting.
Hearing's now open. Does anyone want to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 50. Anyone opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes 50. 18 is a hearing resolution assessing a $300 civil penalty against 75 Pronto Express, 1875 North, violation of cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
State the number of that item is 21.
What did I say?
It's 18.
Well, I'm really having a bad day. Sorry.
That's okay. For the record. There you go.
Passes 50. 22 is an ordinance amending chapter 13.08 of the municipal code entitled sanitary sewer rates to increase rates and to add new definitions for industrial users. Staff will request a motion to amend the item. Staff will request a motion to amend the item.
Mayor and Council, Donna Forker, Finance Director. We have a couple items that we wanted to talk to you about today. First was, we did change the ordinance to reflect typographical error in the commodity codes in some of the major components. The second would be to change the date from August 1st to September 1st. I talked about that last week, giving the sister cities additional time. And the third thing is something you had asked me to bring back, which would be to separate the increase that we had projected for the second year for the domestic and commercial. We were at six and a half percent, and to bring it back, split between two years, to see what the compounding effect would have. And by doing so, we could go down to a three and a three. And if you look at the screen, you can see that by doing that, the increases on the typical residents for both years would be sixteen, sixty-nine. For large family, be twenty-two, forty-nine.
Last for the year, correct?
Correct. And then for s-
And it'd be a sixteen?
Sixty-nine for two, for the two years together.
Oh, I got you. I see what you did now.
Which actually ends up being a saving by doing the split, because we're going to three and three. The regular would be a dollar fifteen, the large family be a dollar fifty-four. A senior would be ninety cents, and a business would be three dollars and ninety-eight cents by doing the splits.
By doing the three and three.
The three and the three, so it is cheaper for the resident. Not a lot of dollars, but still some.
Every, yeah, every bit helps, so... Otherwise, it would have been, for residential, it would have been zero, and then six point five.
Correct. And this way, it would be three and three.
First amendment is the September 1 date would be the effective date.
Correct.
Second amendment is-
Would, would be whether you want, would be just to fix the error that we put in all the typo. Mark, Mark Sims can explain that one.
Where is that, Mark?
Deputy Mayor and Council, that's in the, in the ordinance. There aren't page numbers, but if you look at the flow charges, we show... And also, dates need to be changed there as well, from August to September. But we show the fog or fat soil and grease charge incorrectly there. It should double when it goes to tier two. And if you look at, on top of the page, it says mass charge.
Yes.
At number two.
Right.
And then underneath flow charge, at the very bottom of the page, right-hand side, fog is shown at twenty-five cents for tier one and twenty-seven cents for tier two. Tier two should be double tier one, so it's fifty cents for, for each pound.
One, two, three, four, five, six pages in. Be six pages in on the bottom right-hand corner, where tier two is referred to under the fog, and it shows twenty-seven.
Right. And the next, the next page, you'll see the same thing, under mass charge, about two-thirds of the way down that page for tier one, it says fifty cents per pound. That should be twenty-seven cents per pound, and then it doubles for tier two.
Here.
They were just switched around.
The twenty-five, and that was twenty-seven, but it should be fifty.
Okay.
And, and all of the dates shown here should be-
That shouldn't be fifty.
For the first year, effective September 1st.
Yeah, tier one to tier, tier two, for that second one, the fog, you were saying it goes from fifty to what?
Twenty, down to twenty-seven.
No.
Twenty-seven's tier one, and fifty-four is tier two.
Right.
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 Now, I'm talking about the one that's fifty, tier one, and fifty-four of tier two.
That's the way.
The fifty should be twenty-seven.
Fifty should be twenty-seven.
They're just swapped around in the two.
Now I understand.
And you-
I got it wrong, too.
And then you see the same thing on the next page.
Wow, I got that one.
Under mass charge, tier two is shown at twenty-seven, it should say fifty there. Should be double of tier one.
I'm lost on it, Mark, I'm sorry.
Instead of twenty-five, should be, instead of twenty-seven, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this would be under the, where it says effective August 1st, is actually now effective September 1st, but... Be the next page after that.
So there are three places, aren't there, Mark?
There are four places. Then it's all just numbers that are switched around. It doesn't change the, the outcome, but-
But the tier, tier one numbers are correct.
Not in every case, no.
Go back through that.
When, when we come back for the second ordinance-
Sure.
Reading, we would bring back-
We'll correct that.
Updated copies.
Yeah, but I'm six pages in, you're going from twenty-five to fifty.
On the fog?
On the fog.
Well, let's see, six pages.
Twenty-five to fifty.
Seven, seventh page.
Weird.
It should be twenty-seven to fifty-four.
Can I, can we show it here, Lisa? Can we show it here?
There's a button right on the front of it, Mark, that you need to push.
Then, twenty-seven there?
Yeah, that's where twenty-seven to fifty-four is.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get, so the first one should be twenty-five and fifty?
The light should, come on.
No, I don't, I don't think so. There's only two areas, right?
Four.
Four. Well-
Twenty-five and fifty here.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-five and fifty, okay. There. In September.
Don't know if you can see that. Again, there should be page numbers probably at the bottom of these, but-
I can. I got that one, twenty-five and fifty.
Yep.
Where's your next one, Mark?
Next one is the next page.
Seven and fifty-
Tier one goes from fifty to twenty-seven.
Okay.
And the date.
Or the date, September 1st.
Next one goes twenty-five to fifty.
September 1st. Next page, you can see tier two seems to be double tier one. Fifty cents. And then, the last one is the next-
Should be twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven under tier one there.
Okay, thank you.
For the July 20 increase.
Thank you. And all the dates changed to September.
Right.
Donna, one question that I had was, I do just want to, I understand that the rate increase is a direct result of needing the debt capacity, is that accurate? Am I saying that correctly?
It is the-
Need to have-
The rate increase is, in order for us to get the state revolving loans that we need to have, we have to have debt coverage. Plus, we've been using balances, and we're down to $3 million worth of fund balance for the sewer fund. So it's, the biggest criteria is the debt coverage, but the second is how much cash we have available in the sewer fund.
And my follow-up then with that is, are there any other options besides a rate increase? Is there anything creatively that we can do or think of?
The only thing we can do is get a rate increase, because we cannot go forward with any rehab at the plant or with the renewable energy, unless you want to use tax dollars.
But we needed to borrow money, is that what you're saying?
Yes. We could have issued general obligation debt for that, but the interest rate's going to be higher than what we can do the state revolving loan, loan fund. Excuse me, state revolving loan fund for. It's 2.75% for an SRL, and our bonds were over three, about three and a half. Let's go-
Wait a minute. We didn't pay three and a half on that last bond.
When you get the out years, where it's 2.75 throughout. It was around three percent with the graduated.
It didn't show that as an effective yield, and that's what-
No, the effective yield was lower, yes.
Well, isn't that your bond rate, then?
Depends how you do your coupons.
That's how I view it. I don't know how else you can view it, but here in the finance department, not me, but that's a new one to me. Isn't, isn't effective yield what it costs for money?
That's the present value of it right now. But the other concern I would have would be debt capacity, because we're borrowing 33 million.
If we did it this way, then our bond rate, bond rate even go up, right?
Well, I would just add, if, if we tried to issue $33 million, and they, even as a GO, they would look at our sewer fund and see that it doesn't cash flow, and if they would even allow us to issue.
Now, wait a minute. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue small details here, but they know we borrowed 32 million. It affects our bond capacity, it affects our bond rate, because in fact, you have to show that under GAAP.
No, but I'm saying, if we tried to go out to the market now and sell $33 million out rates in place, that would not be favorable.
Okay, that may be true.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, it's not because of the bonding.
No. This is strictly a cash flow and, and bond coverage issue.
And you're saying if we went through the GO, it would be unfavorable, so that's why it has to be a rate increase?
If it was unfavorable, you wouldn't be able to bond.
You wouldn't be able to bond it.
No, and if we were to do revenue bond, which would be another option, we would have larger revenue convenances that we'd have to, because they would set, make you set aside three different sinking funds. You'd have to have one for the highest principal and interest, they'd have to have one for the most principal interest in a year, and then they would also have another set aside as a cash draw. So revenue bonds are completely out of the question, so it's either GOs or state revolving loans.
Donna, if we could do the three percent, three percent for the residential, does that still enable the city to meet the SRL debt coverage requirement?
Yes, it does.
Yes. It actually, it actually accelerates revenue, because under the current proposal, there is no residential rate increase in the first year.
Yes.
So we would have a three percent bump.
In the first year.
Yes.
Okay.
And the residential is until next year, correct?
If, if you look at your screens, you'll see the, the coverages with-
If they're three and three, they'll start.
With the three and the three.
Yeah, the three and the three start immediately, though, right?
Right, and so the three and a three actually is a beneficial for the city, because one, it reduces the rate, but it also gets us cash sooner.
Is there a motion?
No, there is not.
So what was next year's rate, rate increase, and we're just moving it back, then? Is that what you're saying?
What we would do is do a three percent September 1st, and then do a three percent July 1st of 2020.
Okay, I got it.
And I'm talking only residential and commercial.
But we're only voting for a rate increase for 2020 at this time.
The ordinance-
We're, we're actually requesting a two-year rate increase.
The ordinance was prepared based what I presented last week. You asked me to come back and present additional information, which I have the draft-up ordinance written for a rate increase in nineteen and twenty for residential and commercial. All the rest of them were a two-year rate increase.
Okay, so this ordinance says on here, August 1st, so we're gonna put it to September 1st? Nineteen and to July 1st, 2020?
Yes.
Is that for everyone, then, sister cities as well as rate users?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is a three percent?
Ours is three percent.
Well, in order to facilitate the discussion on the item, I'll, I'll move that we amend item 22 to make it effective September 1, 2019. And the domestic and commercial rate would be three percent September 1, 2019, and three percent July 1, 2020.
A second.
The last question that I would have, Donna, it's more for you than with the sister cities. I understand their increase is gonna be more significant than, say, the three or what we're proposing for our, I understand that. What I'm asking is, if we do the three percent with our rate users, would that, because I understand that them trying to push that onto their constituents or their people, their rate users, is gonna be difficult, and you want to move quickly, and we're trying, I understand Mark's been good, and we've tried to negotiate with that. Does that buy them more time if they need more-
Councilman Waters, I can answer that. When we did the cost of service study, it was to take and ensure that the appropriate people were paying the appropriate rates-
Yeah.
Of wastewater. So an increase, splitting the seven percent to a three-three for Sioux City residents, would have no impact on any other rates. Because what the cost of service study does is it broke down by user, what each should be paying.
Okay, I'll follow. Do you have a motion in a second?
On the-
Yes.
On the amendment.
Anyone to be heard?
Keith Baker, 2101 Nace Sioux City. You know what kind of sticks in my craw is when Mr. Scott mentioned last week about picking up the extra increase for what Big Ox isn't paying. What would happen to me if I didn't pay my sewer bill?
Shut off.
Get shut off, right? Okay, then, why don't you shut them off, then?
Or shut off. The problem is, Keith, that they are not in our jurisdiction, and we don't control the ballot.
Why did you supply them in the first place, then?
I didn't.
If you had no authority to over them, why did you supply them initially, knowing this going in?
We have that all over, we have that all over this-
There's nothing you can do about it.
We have, it's all over the region. I mean, the dog food factory in North Sioux is a big user.
So why should the burden fall on the citizens?
Trust me, I'm not happy about it.
Why are you gonna vote for an increase, then? We just lost our senior citizen discount. I mean, if I don't pay mine, is somebody else gonna pay my bill for me, so I don't get shut off? I'm sure you have that jurisdiction to shut me off.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a city, you do.
I think you know where I'm coming from.
I agree.
So you guys are gonna sit up there, and nobody, they don't pay their bill, and you guys are gonna give the citizens of Sioux City, Iowa, an increase, knowing somebody else don't pay their bill, so you're gonna put the burden on the citizens?
We have no choice.
Really?
There, there's no choice. If, if you would have listened to what Donna had to say-
Oh, I, I've heard.
You'll understand why.
Heard. Okay, let me ask you guys this. Why don't you raise the rates of the other surrounding cities you supply? If you cut everybody else's service off that you supply Dakota Dudes, South Sioux, or whomever you apply services to, is Sioux City itself, can, can it sustain itself under just the sewage in Sioux City on the rates you have now?
No. No, we have too much capacity at that point. Answer, I mean, you were better to answer that.
Yeah, we would have excess capacity that we have to still pay for.
So how much are you raising their rates, then?
Seven.
Why don't you give them a little bit more of an increase? Have you ever thought about the income of the people, of the people that live in Sioux City compared to people in the surrounding area that you supply?
Keith, Keith, we are-
Has anybody ever taken that thought in mind?
Keith, we are actually raising our sister city rates, I believe it's-
Almost seventy percent.
Almost seventy percent.
Okay. I mean, you gotta understand where we're coming from.
And you have to trust that we're trying, we're struggling with that same thing. Sometimes, you know what I mean? I think sometimes people think that, no, we're just up here and we'll just increase, do whatever. That's not the case. We're trying to problem solve as well.
I keep track of what my cost of living is every year compared to what, what I get. I don't mean to laugh, but it's a joke. I mean, my cost of living has went up 15.8%, me, myself, on what my basic needs. We'll probably get maybe .02% cost of living. We'll probably get maybe .02% cost of living increase. This is what we have to live with. It doesn't make sense, does it?
I believe that our citizens can rest assured that this council would not do what we're proposing to do without taking the necessary steps that we need to take. And I can't go into detail because I'm-
You don't have to, it means I pretty much.
But we're taking, but we're taking the necessary steps. Had we not been taking the necessary step, I couldn't support this either. We know exactly where you're coming from.
Okay, now, if you was to turn, you know, even if you go after Big Ox for your money, they're gonna file bankruptcy, restructure, you're not gonna get your money anyway. I know how business works. I mean, yeah, okay, we all know this. Okay, I got another suggestion that may be, maybe out of line, you know, they took our, they took our senior citizens discount away, and you guys weren't happy about it. I just said you weren't. I got a suggestion.
What's that?
Why don't you give senior citizens of this city and disabled a free parking permit for their vehicles? Just a thought.
I think that thought should be put in front of the seniors advisory committee.
You know, and, and-
When you still run in and terminate.
We may, but passing on the thought, I'm sorry.
With our plate number on it, knowing it's that vehicle that we're in. Just a thought. I think it's a good one. Save us something.
And I think it's a good thought, and I know Councilmember Moore will bring that to the senior advisory committee, I would tell you, based upon things that we've had to vote on right here, such as the senior rate, I don't think that's gonna fly because then you still have discrimination. And I hope you understand that, it's not, and I'm-
Yeah, I know, I know.
I just like, I'll say a mayor, the mayor's famous line, I'm not practicing law, but I would just imagine that you're gonna run into that exact same problem. I mean, I think it's fine, I-
We'll pass on the concept, but I think we need to get back to the, to the ordinance as a matter at hand.
Okay, okay.
But I'll, I will, no, I'll pass that on, I will.
But, yeah, I don't know, I, you just can't keep doing, I know you gotta survive, but God, you know, it's just, there's gotta be an end here somewhere. I mean, we can't survive like you guys.
Well, excuse me, I don't know what you mean like us guys, but I could tell ya, I work two jobs so I can make a living, so there you go.
You know what, I'm gonna tell you what, Rhonda, I'd like to work, but the VA says I can't. I'd love to.
I'd love to be retired, but my pocketbook says I can't, so that's why I'm up here. I love what I do, but you know what, I totally understand where you're coming from, I am a senior citizen, you know, none of us like, like the-
You know what pitiful part of it is, we're losing a lot of our discounts everywhere you go. Like restaurants, they don't give anymore. They look at us like, so what?
Yep.
We're a forgotten breed, let me tell you.
Well, I can tell you one thing, I don't forget about our senior citizens, because that's what I, that's who I take care of, and I understand where you're coming from.
Well, I tell you what, honestly, guys, my son just moved to Ponca, and I'm definitely gonna move from Sioux City. I can tell you that right now. If somebody offered me an apartment or a house in Ponca or Jackson, I'd be gone today.
And that's the challenge. Because in the city, we have all the amenities that you're gonna wanna use.
But it's time to do it.
I'm just saying.
It's not gonna get much cheaper wherever you go.
I know, but it's something different. I mean, you'll get to a point in life, Rhonda, where it's time for a change. It really is.
Okay.
All right, Keith, we're gonna-
So I thought I'd say-
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, again, I already thanked Bob, but thanks for the no parking sign. It really works.
Oh, yeah? Good, I wondered how that went, yeah.
It only took about two or three days to get it out there again, I appreciate it, guys.
See, see, there's nothing going for you.
We actually do something right, that's good.
I'm not never saying you guys haven't. I've never taken that from you.
No, I know.
Appreciate it.
Spread the word.
All right. Anyone else to be heard?
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Mayor and council, just to make you aware, the finance director and myself have met with six industries so far and presented them with what we, I guess, would say is a simulated bill based upon what the new rates would be. Five of those industries were, were very good, very cordial, had no issues, no concerns, and we're working with the sixth. We are meeting with one more tomorrow, and then one on Thursday, I believe, and also with one of the sister cities tomorrow.
Ted Cherry with the city of North Sioux, thank you for taking a little time tonight.
Good afternoon.
Thank you too as well for information. So this rate increase is gonna be about 70%, a little bit over a 70% increase for the sister city communities. For North Sioux, that's $300,000 over the course of 12-month period, going back 12 months, figuring out rates and whatnot. That's going to be very difficult for us to take on. So I had spoken to Donna earlier, and I apologize for not talking to you earlier today, but I spoke to an engineer today, and he said, for us to do a rate analysis, it's gonna take about a month to do an analysis on our end, so I would ask that the sister city rate at least be pushed out until November instead of the September timeframe. I know that that puts you into a position where you're not receiving those funds in, but the city of North Sioux, or city of Sioux City has had over a year to put their rate analysis together. The sister city communities were sort of led to believe that we were gonna see about a 7% increase, because that's what you were shooting for as an overall target, and then a 70% increase came down the pipe. So I would just ask for a little more time for us to be able to do some analysis on our end, so that our rates for our community members can be given as much consideration as the rates for your community members have been.
Basically asking for a 60-day extension.
But I thought we had a rate analysis.
This was what my revenue requirements were, was two 7% over the years of total revenue, but the cost of service study showed that the domestic residential cities have been paying more than their share, and so the cost of service study did the allocation, and what you're seeing in the ordinance now is representation of what the cost of service study shows. And I can bring back a fund analysis next week with a two-month delay for the sister cities, and we can see what that does to the funds.
Because that was my initial question that I was gonna follow up with, is if they need that time, because I understand how that would be difficult, but I didn't know with our 3%, if our 3% takes effect, if that would give them enough time for that 60-day extension.
And I'll just need to go work with the numbers.
That would be my thought.
Yeah, mine too, that'd be more than fair, I think.
It'd be much appreciated if we could get that extra time. I also would ask if, if we could get some sort of recommendation or projections for the next five years of increases for the sister cities. We do have two years in the ordinance now, but one thing that we have asked the staff in the past is getting long-term projections so that we can properly plan for our rate increases going forward. Five years should be a running total that is achievable, I hope, for you all, and then we can, we can do that analysis on our end as well.
We can provide that.
We have, you know, been getting these rate increases, you know, we've known about it for 10 days now. The last time around, it was a very short turnaround time, so giving us that extra capacity and time to move forward with increases on our end would be much appreciated. And then I guess I would ask if there's any sort of, going back to this large increase of 70%, if there's any sort of multi-year sort of phasing approach that could be looked at for putting that rate into place for us? A 70% increase from, I think it's $2.16 per 1,000 gallons to 3.68, that's gonna be, you know, significant, obviously, for our customers, and we're in the same boat as you guys have with, with some citizens who haven't seen an increase to their social security in five, 10 years, or whatever that might be. So anything that we could do to maybe roll back some of the impact that we might see would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Well, and I would say, Bob, I appreciate, sorry, thanks, Ted, what I would say, Bob, is I appreciate that we'll be able to give the sister cities those projections of thinking what those would be, but they would still be voted on by council, is that correct?
Yes.
Rate increases?
Yes.
So then, where I have a problem with that, and it's not directly on this, when I just talked about that at the last council meeting, saying the same thing about parking rates and other increases, we said, oh, no, we can't do that, because we can't bind citizen, or can't bind councils of doing that, it's just making a recommendation. So what I'm saying is, I just want us to think about doing that in other areas, because I think what Ted's saying makes sense, that it's like, look, they wanna know, just like our, our community wants to know, hey, we think that a parking rate should increase every 10 years, or every whatever years, and make those recommendations. I just think we could do it in other areas, too.
Right now, we have, when you look at the fund analysis projection, it was 7, 7, 5.75, 5.75, and 5.75.
But it would be different for the sister cities and industrials, we can provide that information.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I hope we take that same advice and-
Councilmember Waters, we do a five-year analysis, so we should be able to provide that to you.
How much revenue do we get from the sister-
For all, for all our rates.
I wonder-
If you want a specific number, Donna, I can give that.
Right, currently, from the dunes, for this fiscal year, we're looking at $277,000. For North Sioux, Sergeant Bluff, and South Sioux combined, 2.3 million.
And those fees are going up 70% this year?
Yes, based on the cost of service study.
And the cost of service said that most of our revenue is from our residential, about 60%, and then 13.4% is industries inside of Sioux City, 13.7% outside of Sioux City, and 13.5, sister cities, but those are paying 5% of the costs, the outside are.
But if you go back to your chart, you gotta have 110 coverage, I realize you still have a cash flow problem possibly, but you don't necessarily, I realize that you want it, but you don't necessarily have to have that to get the 110 coverage.
I've got about a little under 5% to play with, which deferring the readings for a couple more months will fix, will affect that somewhat.
Well, go back to your chart, you were at 1.288.
That is in year 21. The year that I'm more concerned about is 2020.
That's your 5% that you're talking about. What's your thinking on that?
Just, just wonder how we'd feel if we put a 70% increase, if they put, if they controlled our water and put a 70% increase on us, that's all.
No, we have looked at capital, we've gone through the expenses, trying to trim this down as much as possible.
How'd we manage all these years?
I'm sorry?
How'd we manage all these years? Can you give them a second?
We've been, we had a healthy fund balance, and we have been waiting for the renewable energy project to happen, so we've been just waiting for it to start kicking in, and we were hoping that the 3% we put in July 1st to 17 would have carried us over, but unfortunately, we've-
Councilmember Capron, to answer your question, our residents have subsidized outside municipalities and industries. The cost of service study allocates based on how the money is spent, and it showed that our residents have subsidized, and that's what we're trying to correct here.
There's no question that that's the case, but the, I mean, there's just a whole lot of things. Cost of doing sewer projects has skyrocketed way out, rolled out a sewer plant based upon what we should have had by now, I'm not overly excited about Bartlett and West's performance, but we should have been online selling gas right now, and, you know, so that's 2 million, 3 million for Big Ox, it's a combination of things, and I know what you're saying, Bob, but that's beside the point. We wouldn't have been here if some other things would have happened the way they should have happened, and, and that's just a tough pill to swallow for me. And I don't know that, I don't know that they'll make the date now, Bartlett and West on that. I'm not, I have no confidence in them right now, in their ability to perform. They have gotten one heck of a lot of money. I haven't seen any results other than money going out.
Waiting on DMT, the supplier of the pressure filter equipment.
Well, that's not my fault, that's not your fault, that's our fault, they knew what they had to have, they should have had it ordered. It's like we told them, we don't, don't order it, right?
We, we ordered it, but the shop drawings have been delayed by DMT, and then they've gotta be reviewed by DNR.
Ridiculous.
And it's not like we can't short Bartlett and West, and then they go after the supplier, you know? Either way, they're getting paid.
I think, I think we'll have a case for liquidated damages with DMT.
With the supplier, I'm saying we can not pay Bartlett and West, you know, and they go after them, that's not how it would work.
No, you can't do that to an engineer, you always have to pay the engineer no matter what. Anyone else to be heard, come on up if you wanna be heard.
Good afternoon, Jeff Dooley, Dakota Dunes Community Improvement District, I just wanted to put into perspective, you know, from a sister city perspective, you know, the percentage increase is, is a hard one for us to take, but the actual dollar per thousand, I think it was a 3.63 per thousand.
3.68 instead of 2.
I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the sister cities, but I don't think we have, we don't necessarily have a problem with that, it's just the huge increase. I mean, if you think of the value of treating 1,000 gallons worth of sewage, if you had it in a tank in your front yard, I think you could pull out $5 and get somebody to take that away for us, so I think there's definitely value there, we were, I think we're just more concerned with the sudden increase, maybe some of the impacts that Big Ox had had, and maybe ask the question, if Big Ox ever does get back online, or you're able to collect some of that, what does that mean for future rates down the road, maybe it means fewer increases and that kind of thing, but as far as the dollar amount, I don't, I don't know that, I'm not, personally, I'm not afraid of that, it was just a big increase in the sense of urgency that it brought with it, so appreciate your time.
Good point, thank you. So it may have an impact, what we collect from Big Ox, and it may have an impact what our, with looking at five-year projections.
Any collection of revenue would be helpful.
And we all need to know that, that's a point, that was Ted's point as well, we all need to know what that's gonna be, what that's gonna look like, to avoid this from reoccurring. So this is-
No, I was just gonna ask, so are we voting on the amendment, or did we amend rate? Yeah, it was Dan's motion.
The amendment.
Of the 3 and 3.
Pete seconded.
Seconded on the amendment, but no vote. No, say the amendment again.
It would be audible on this, right?
Say it again, so I know what we're voting on.
The amendment would change from a one-year 7.5% to a 3 and 3, or make changes to the corrections to the various rates, it's at the effective date September 1st.
And then Donna-
That's what the amendment is.
And then Donna is bringing back information of what-
Well, do we need to change the date to November 1?
We will, probably next week.
Yeah, I would recommend you wait till we have that analysis completed.
I did want to incorporate that the other changes Mark had pointed out.
Yes.
Right, and that way, the ordinance next week you'll get will have all these corrections in place.
Okay.
Okay.
It'll be a clean copy, the 3 and 3, and then you'll just present what would happen if we went-
Yes.
Ted, this would be the first reading, then we'll come back next week and have that additional information.
Will you be there? Should we reiterate that last point of that request? If there was any way to look at doing some kind of phasing of that 70% increase-
We will look at that.
And I would agree with Jeff, I, I think the science behind what HDR did is correct, I think the rate itself is correct, it's just how do we get to that rate that it's not overly burdensome.
Well, South Sioux and Sergeant Bluff can afford that, but North Sioux, we gotta go- go easy on you guys.
I couldn't resist, Bob.
Did you, did you have anything to add?
Not really, just to reiterate what everyone's been saying, is to modify it would help a lot, spread it over. We understand the cost of survey, cost of, that was done, we agree with that.
Bob, name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, Bob Livermore, City of South Sioux City.
Thank you.
And so we would like to see that also, to modify the rate increase over time a little better. But yes, we, we understand that it's necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just curious why we, if we don't have to have a rate increase for our citizens today, why we want to, but.
Because it would have to be 7 next, right?
6.5. Ours would be 6.5.
And it actually saves them a little money then, doesn't it? Breaking it down 3 and 3 over the 2.
It's a little bit of money, not a lot, but it's a little.
Not a whole lot when you compound it, but.
No.
Anyone else to hear?
No, I just want to say that I appreciate Ted and Bob and Jeff sharing their thoughts, and I understand exactly where they're at. But it really does boil down to, you know, that it is a necessary action by the city council in order to be able to continue to do what we need to do to maintain the wastewater treatment plan in an efficient manner, and we would all love not to have to do it, I guarantee you. But I do think it's, unfortunately, the cost of doing business, the costs just keep getting higher, and virtually everything we do and all the purchases we make. But I do want to, I would agree that I want to be as reasonable as we possibly can be, and if we can work out an opportunity to phase things in, if we can still maintain the revenue to allow us to continue to provide the service we're providing, then, then it's something certainly I'd consider. But, but it is a position that we're in, that we're forced to take a serious look at, and I appreciate all the work, and I know, having attended some of those, a number of them over the last couple of years, the sister city meetings, that there was a push to do the cost of service study. And it's been done, and I don't think anybody will disagree that the expense is there, and we need to react appropriately to just keep us, you know, being able to provide the services that we do. And we want to be fair, not only with our citizens, but with the sister cities. I hope we can take a look at what you bring back next week and find that there is some room to make some compromises.
Mayor and Council, I just want to clarify one thing in case there's any confusion. The amendment for the 3 percent effective September 1st and 3 percent next July 1st, that's for residential and commercial accounts only in Sioux City. It doesn't apply to industrial and major industrial users or sister city users.
I think I'd reiterate Jeff's comment, just if you think about that, for, to cost us $2 or $3 to treat 1,000 gallons of sewage, you know, that's pretty insignificant.
There start then, the sister cities.
Well, that's what she's.
What's that we hope to find out?
That's what she's bringing.
Are you calling the roll on the amendment? Is that how we're doing it?
If you're ready. Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Stop.
Now on the actual motion. We have a motion?
Have to make one.
I'll move it.
Do we need to move?
Move it as amended.
Oh, I would move it as amended.
Second.
Just so you know, Ryan Vought, no, I don't believe in any tax increase or sewer rate increase or anything till you have to have it. I'm sorry, I've been that way for all my life. You don't know that in the next year, we can't collect a few million dollars, you, we're not going to, but in the event we did, then we put 3 percent on our citizens, and I wonder if we had to, so. And it's not gonna change the formula that much, but it's just a personal deal, so.
What happens, and we do come into the money here, we can always take it back, right?
You never lower a rate. I have been here too long to tell you that we've never lowered a rate.
We lowered.
One time.
We may have to make it a second time, because I agree with you in principle, I do. I agree with you in principle, Mayor, but I don't know how long that's gonna take.
I know.
To get those funds collected.
And everything we've found is taking time for this fund.
I agree with you.
Do we have a motion in the second?
Yes, and you may use your panel. Yep.
Passes 4 of 1. Citizen concerns, any citizen to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns, Mr. Greckin.
No, sir, I've handled them already, thank you.
All right, Rhonda.
Today I went to, went to the Trinity Heights, and they had a blessing on the, the ninth, it's nine-foot baptism of Christ, and it was absolutely beautiful. And if anybody gets a chance to go out to Trinity Heights, it's so calming and relaxing, and it's beautiful, so I was very impressed. The bishop was there, and there was a big crowd, so that's all I got.
Thanks.
Calm down.
Mr. Waters.
Mayor will be out there.
So I have a few things, I'll try to make them brief.
I went to Mardo, by the way.
What'd you think?
It was nice.
Food's good?
Yeah. Went there for lunch yesterday.
I agree. So what, a few things that I wanted to bring up, number one, I don't know what their correct process is, so I'm gonna ask maybe, Mr. Padmore, is I got a complaint, there's Sam's Mini-Mart on Glen Avenue, if you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So Sam's Mini-Mart, Glen Avenue, what seems to be happening is people don't want to, obviously backing out onto Glen, and then taking that road, while apparently what's happening is they're all funneling onto the alley right behind it, and then they're racing up that alley. And a lot of the neighbors, I was contacted by one, but said that three neighbors had spoke, and one of them was concerned that they have kids that play in that back area, sometimes their ball goes out. Alley, another person said their vehicle was almost hit, and then the last person has pets, and sometimes they're there. They weren't wanting to block or like vacate the alley, that's not the goal. They were more thinking if you could put barriers in the parking lot for Sam's Mini-Mart, so it's enticing people just to race through there. I don't know what that.
We'll, we'll look into what options we can do.
I would appreciate that.
Yep.
The second thing that I wanted to update council on, again, I'll try to be brief, was tourism. And so where we're at with that is, we have the Articles of Incorporation made, the regional board is made. As far as the committee that we voted on here, those are, they're changing their directive now, and we'll just be focusing on Sioux City properties and kind of as it once was. And we will be meeting as a region tomorrow for the first time. So the regional entities will be there tomorrow, talking about moving forward, getting the, obviously, the executive director job application, or the, that out into the public, and making some of those others' decisions. So that will be happening tomorrow, I just wanted to update council. The last thing, at one of our meetings, I believe it was the Human Rights Commission joint meeting, it was brought up about those Tyson interns in our community, if you recall the conversation, it was Tyson Foods stepped up in a big way and was financing a number of interns, I believe it's somewhere between 9 and 15, if I remember correctly, that are in our community, they work for nonprofits for the summer, they're paid through Tyson and through other opportunities. But council wanted an update, one thing I wanted to invite you to, it is tonight, so I know it's late notice, but I just got the go-ahead to invite you. At 6:15, between 6:15 and 7, it's coming go, if you would be interested. But all of those interns will be presenting and networking what they're working on for those nonprofits. And so it's trying to build their skills as far as saying, this is what we're working on, this is why it's important.
When is it?
So it's tonight.
Where?
6:15 to 7 PM, and it's at Eppley Auditorium, there's a little art gallery on Morningside College Campus. And it is come and go, so if you can come at 6:45, or you can come at 5 to 7, I'm sure they would be willing to stay. But I knew it was late notice, I just got the green light to try to invite more people, so. But, and they will be around all year, and they have an end-of-the-year presenter, poster presentation as well. So I can make sure that you're invited to that, that is open to the public, but it's just something that, work that students are doing is pretty incredible, so I wanted to make sure you guys had the opportunity, if you could make it. Oh, and last thing, I'm sorry, I lied, I had one more thing, is, isn't it tomorrow, is the public meeting? Yes.
On the trail?
Yeah, bike lane, yeah. So 7 PM in council chambers, there's a public meeting for Hamilton Boulevard to have a bike lane added to it, and so I would just encourage citizens as well as anyone in the audience, which is pretty few now, but to come and have a conversation about that.
Who's holding that?
I thought it was Parks and.
Yeah, Matt's, and I'm not sure who else is.
Probably the active transportation committee, I would imagine.
Will it be in the format of a presentation, or is it gonna be just to come and wander around and look at plans? Do you know?
I do not know, no.
I kind of wish we would review our format of those public meetings. We just have a little more structure to them, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, the DOT one was kind of like, why'd we have it?
And if we could have a presentation then of what came of that, sometimes I think that's beneficial.
Dan? Nothing further, Mayor?
I just want to make sure, you have to get your application for that sports commission money, are we on target to get that done?
June 30th.
Yes. Jessica's working on it.
Well.
It was brought up to.
Actually.
Actually, it's been delayed, I believe.
Yeah, that, they backed it, the state backed it up one month, and Jessica and Spiro are involved. We were told at the last sports commission meeting.
On top of it, I don't think it's 25 or 50,000 or whatever it is.
Yeah, exactly.
It's 50.
50.
Yeah, okay. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Stop.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Donin.